We're live on YouTube.
Okay, may I have a motion to return to public session? Julie, Ingrid, all in favor? Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United
The United States of America. To the republic which stands
one nation under God, indivisible
indivisible
liberty
and justice law.
Good evening. Here is to a brighter and healthier new year for everyone. We want to thank our staff, faculty, building leaders, administrators for all of their continued hard work in providing our students with a sound education in these challenging times. Recently, both intramural and regular low-risk and moderate-risk sports have started at the junior/senior high school. High-risk sports have been indefinitely postponed at this time. Strict protocols are being followed, including mask-wearing. At this time, for our low- and moderate-risk sports teams, no spectators will be allowed at home or away games. As promised, we are continuing to reevaluate our learning models, the full-in-school, hybrid, and remote at both the elementary and secondary levels. As you may recall, we asked families to commit to one learning model for a specified period of time. Elementary families committed to February 1st, and the junior/senior high school families committed to the end of the second quarter, January 22nd. Both dates are approaching, and families will have the opportunity to change into a different model if they so choose. In the next few days, you'll be hearing from the school and will be asked to again commit to a specific learning model for a period of time. Elementary until April 12th, and at the secondary level until March 1st. Later tonight, we'll be acting on a motion to grant tenure to Sandra Rivera-Danera in the area of Lot. We want to congratulate her on this achievement. Ms. Hazut will offer a few words about her during the superintendent's report. Although it's just the beginning of January, we are already preparing our budget for the next school year. As we look forward, we begin the difficult process of determining what next year will look like. We will be holding a community budget forum on January 26, 2021. Please plan on virtually attending. Your input is important to us. Mr. Fenter and Mr. Sutcho will be presenting on the tax cap and the list of unfunded mandates that dictate how tax dollars are spent. There will be an opportunity for public comment. Lastly, we continue with the search for a new superintendent with the application deadline at the end of this month. We also will be posting the position of Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. We want to thank Dr. Bellino for stepping in on an interim basis at such a challenging time. Dr. Bellino will remain in this position through the end of the school year. And thank you so much, Lydia. We hope everyone enjoys the upcoming long weekend in honor of Martin Luther King Junior Day on Monday. Please remember to social distance, wear masks, and wash hands. This enables our schools to remain open. Mr. Fenter.
Thank you, Mrs. Brogan. Good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year. I begin my superintendent's report this evening in much the same way that I have for several weeks and months, thanking our leaders, our teachers, our amazing support staff for their hard work and commitment each day to our students, as well as to our Board of Education and our community for their continued support during these very difficult times. As we continue to navigate this pandemic, we are reminded that we are in a footrace between rising numbers of cases and the vaccines that provide us with hope for a return to a normal school experience for our students. I'd like to provide some updates to the community related to a number of different items. First, COVID testing. As the community knows, we have been providing testing access to the community as well as to our staff at the junior/senior high school each week, and we plan to continue to do so ahead. We believe that providing this access to testing helps to keep our staff and students and community members safe, and also helps in our efforts to keep our schools open. You may have heard that the governor has talked about changing the rules as it relates to required testings for school districts with phrases like "yellow zones." We have not yet received direction from the governor about these new rules. However, I want to assure the community that through the effort of our district leadership and the support of our Board of Education, we are prepared, should Cold Spring Harbor be required, to test a portion of randomly selected students and staff in the coming days or weeks. And we really appreciate the support of the Board of Education in allowing us to partner with a provider who can do that for us. Of course, with the vaccines coming out at this time, and our staff and our schools being able to access these vaccines, we are looking for every possible way to provide these vaccines to our staff as soon as possible. And we are working with the Departments of Health and local providers and partners in order to be able to do that. And we continue to, we will continue those efforts in the coming days and weeks. As Mrs. Brogan mentioned, a parent questionnaire will be going out to our families this week for both elementary students as well as for secondary students. As Mrs. Brogan mentioned, our elementary parent will be given the option again of either a fully remote or a five-day in-person learning experience for the window of February 1st to April 12th. That's a longer period than what we will ask our secondary teachers to do. Remember, students at the elementary level who go fully remote will be assigned to a new classroom. And so we want that experience to be for a longer period of time and allow our staff to set those programs up and address the needs of those students at the elementary level who select a remote option. At the secondary level, we are looking at the end of the semester. January 23rd will be the final day of the previous election. Moving forward from the 23rd to March 1st, we will ask our parents to make a decision as to the learning model that they prefer. As the community knows, we have offered three options at the secondary level: five-day in-person, fully remote, or alternate-day option. I've spoken in the past about the challenges that the alternate-day option provide. And what we know is that the providing an alternate-day option, in addition to the changes that take place just as a result of being in a COVID world, is having an impact on the quality of instruction and the assessments and the experiences of our students. At the same time, we know that with rising numbers is a great sensitivity and concern among our parents who have selected the alternate-day model. Ultimately, I don't believe that the model is sustainable for the remainder of the school year. My suggestion and recommendation is, is that we will ask our parents to again choose from the three options: five-day in-person, fully remote, and alternate day up until March 1st. So the selection for this week will include those three options. Then I will ask the board in February to consider the ending of the hybrid or alternate-day option after March 1st. I think this is important for our instructional quality and for us to address the needs of our students. The discussion and any questions that will be raised will be addressed at our February 9th Board of Education meeting to address that. I would also like those community members on another topic who look closely at the workings of the board. Last month, we proposed a calendar for the 2021/22 school year. That calendar was proposed, and since that time, New York State came out with an end-of-the-school-year date that was different from the one that we had believed would be accurate. Therefore, we have removed the calendar from formal approval in tonight's meeting. We have asked New York State to consider changing the date that they've selected to end the school year, and you will see a return of the calendar for approval at the February 9th Board of Education meeting. I would also wanted to point out, for those who look closely at our agendas, that you will see that there's a transfer of monies item on our agenda, which relates to curriculum writing and planning work that was, has been led by Dr. Bellino and our other leaders. I raise this because while it may seem like just a perfunctory bureaucratic task, what it represents is a dynamic and responsive approach that Dr. Bellino has led for our students and staff to be able to adjust our instructional program to meet our students where they are and to make the changes to our curriculum to ensure that our students are receiving the instruction they need, having experienced the very different experience this past spring. So I thank Dr. Bellino for her leadership and all of our teachers for their outstanding work in creating new curriculum to address the needs of our students, as well as our other leadership team members who were leaders in that regard as well. I would also like at this time to acknowledge what Mrs. Brogan mentioned, is that we have a staff member who I will be recommending for tenure for this evening's meeting. Ms. Andrea Rivera-Danera is a member of our World Language and Fless Department, and I would like at this time to turn it over to Mrs. Hazut to talk about the impact that Ms. Rivera-Danera has had on our students and our schools. Ms. Hazut?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Fenter. Good evening, everyone. So I am very pleased this evening to speak about Señorita Sandra Rivera-Danera, who is receiving her tenure. And while Sandra works mainly at Westside School, she also teaches Fless at Lloyd Harbor School. So tonight, I am speaking about Sandra's work also on behalf of Valerie Massimo, Principal of Lloyd Harbor. Sandra lives as a lifelong learner, pursuing multiple master's degrees, including leadership, while continuing to learn as an athlete, taking classes such as surfing, just as one example. In addition, Sandra coaches our junior varsity swim teams, which have grown exponentially and, you know, in participation under her direction. Sandra is an extremely diligent and thoughtful practitioner, and she is perhaps one of the most dynamic teachers I have ever come across. Sandra engages children with music, technology, student-centered learning experiences in order to teach not only the concepts and skills needed for Spanish language acquisition, but also in the appreciation of culture and difference. Sandra is an incredible planner. She's always thinking about the most effective ways to reach each and every child in her care. We currently have a child who has required the assistance of an aide at different times during the school day. And this year, we've been slowly peeling away the support because we believe the child's ready for more independence. Sandra quickly jumped up and shared that the child no longer needed additional support in her classroom. And in fact, she asked me to observe in this particular class earlier this year. And while observing, I noticed a few things. I noticed that she gives very specific feedback, descriptive feedback to children. She's gently prompting and scaffolding learning. And what's very obvious is her belief in this child's abilities and all children's abilities. And most importantly, she builds wonderful relationships with all children while maintaining very high expectation for learning. It's this great combination. She has incredible energy and initiative-taking. She is Westside's lead teacher and often the person that I turn to when there are new ideas. This year, we did a fall festival during school hours. We had a spirit week, a turkey trot, and Sandra really took such an incredibly active role in planning and the implementation from every detail for all school-wide events. And she's also just become this go-to teacher for all leaders and teachers in the district for all kinds of special projects. Last spring, when we were in the closure, she was really instrumental in planning for the various signage that we used in our community day drive-by parade. She often spearheads curriculum-writing projects, and the list goes on. While Sandra is earning her tenure this evening, she has already proven to be a teacher leader who brings dedication, tenacity, and enthusiasm to all that she does. We at Westside School are so fortunate to have her on our faculty, and we're looking forward to many more years of her service. Congratulations, Sandra. Your tenure is well-deserved.
Thank you, Ms. Hazut. And I would be remiss if I did not just take a few moments to echo what Ms. Hazut has said about Sandra. If the legacy of, of a leader and a leadership team are those people who are in the classroom instructing our children, I can only thank that Ms. Rivera-Danera will provide a huge boon to all of our legacies by ensuring that we have just a fine person teaching our children and doing an outstanding job. So congratulations, Sandra, and I look forward to the board considering your tenure in just a few moments. At this time, Mrs. Brogan, I turn it back to you, and I just thank everybody for their continued support as we continue to navigate the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, we will go to audience to visitors. So anybody that would like to address the board on matters that are on the agenda or off may do so. You can, James, they can just wave their
Raise, if you're on the webinar, you can just simply raise your hand, and we'll bring you in to ask your question live. Ms. Brogan, I received no written comments or questions for tonight's meeting. So if we could just give a moment to see if anybody in our viewing audience is going to raise their hand? Okay, Mr. Monastero, I'm not seeing anybody. Correct?
I agree. I do not see anybody either.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any questions or comments?
So we'll move on to minute approval. Can we take three together, or?
We can take number one and number three together.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 8th and December 23rd? Tara, Janice? All in favor? And then can I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 16th? Julie, Tara?
And Ms. Wright, you may want to abstain.
All in favor? We will take, under recommendations of the superintendent, personnel recommendations through through the top of page four to business recommendations. Can I have a motion? Anthony, Ingrid? Discussion? All in favor? Congratulations to Sandra. Business recommendations, I'll take one and two. Can I have a motion? Tara, Anthony? Mr. Stuccio, did you want to say something about these, or?
Yes. Well, Mr. Fenter, in his opening remarks, spoke about, number one, under budget transfers, which was to transfer for additional curriculum writing to support the instructional needs during this very, very different year with our different learning modules. Number two, the salary code overshoots. This is a standard budget transfer that you'll see each and every year, month to month, a little more pronounced this year. And this covers negatives in different salary codes. And, and what causes these negatives, there are several different things. It could be a simple item such as when we budgeted, when we budget really based on the prior year where staff will be, we may have budgeted, you know, a staff member to be, you know, .6 in Lloyd Harbor, .4 in Westside, and maybe now it's .7 or .3 or vice versa, .5, .5. And so that will create negatives in the salary codes. We just simply need to move money from one code to the next. Also, related to COVID, we've brought on additional staff, we've brought on additional cleaners, we've brought on additional remote teachers, teacher aides, teaching assistants, and so these unexpected salary expenses do need to be covered as well. So we always have contingency in the budget, and so these budget transfers will just clear up all of those negatives that you would see on the appropriation status report.
Thank you. So all in favor? I'll take health contracts down to the claims auditor report motion. Janice? Tara? All in favor? Okay, should I take claims audit reports separately?
You don't have to.
Okay, so I'll take claims auditor report all the way down through additional business matters all the way to the public hearing regarding Code of Conduct?
You just take this special ed report separate.
Okay, so, so down to the top of page five, is going to have a motion? Anthony, Ingrid, all in favor? Okay, and then special education reports, can I have a motion? Tara, Julie? All in favor? Okay, and now we're moving into the public hearing regarding the Code of Conduct and the other policies that are, I guess it's mostly Code of Conduct that's on for public hearing and a first read. So, Mr. Stuccio, do I take a motion to waive the reading?
At this point, if we could take a motion to enter the public hearing, and this will be about the Code of Conduct.
Okay, can I have a motion to enter a public hearing with regards to the Code of Conduct? Janice? Julie, all in favor?
Okay, and then, Ms. Brogan, if it's okay, I will take the board through the very minor changes to the Code of Conduct. And at this point, if there's anybody in the viewing audience that would like to raise their hand, they could do so at this time in reference to these changes. As the board is aware, anytime we make a revision to the Code of Conduct, we do need to hold a public hearing. Drafts of these policies are on the website, and they'll continue to be on the website. And we'll have that first, that hearing tonight, which will also be our first read of these policies. And then the board will vote to adopt these changes at our February meeting. So as I mentioned, the changes to these policies are relatively little and minor. If you take a look at the first policy, 5300.05, the introduction, a paragraph was added regarding our current state of affairs regarding communicable disease and saying that inappropriate social distancing, as well as the way wearing a face covering to other personal protective equipment may be required while on school property. When you take a look at the next 5300.10 definitions, there are no changes to that particular policy. When we take a look at 5300.25, and this is a policy student dress code that we've invested quite a bit of time in and made many revisions to. The only changes here are formatting. We are starting to change this to be more clear in the policy. Anytime we see shall, we put must or will, just to be more clear, as well as throughout the policies, you'll see as we go along, when we do all of our policy revisions, we're changing the pronouns to be gender-neutral. So instead of his or her, we're writing there. So those are the changes that are in the student dress code policy. Under prohibited student conduct, 5300.30. Under item number E, we add a number 18 under letter E. And letter E is with regard to engaging in any conduct that endangers the safety, morals, health, or welfare of others. It gives examples of such behavior. It's not an all-inclusive list, if you are looking at that, but we did add a number 18, which reads, "Students may not knowingly make false statements or knowingly submit false information to school staff." 5300.35, reporting violations. Again, we add a second paragraph that states that students are prohibited from knowingly making false statements or from knowingly submitting false information to school staff. Again, we do some formatting changes, some shalls to wills in this policy. When we look at 5300.40, disciplinary consequences, procedures, and referrals. Again, more formatting changes, more gender-neutral terms throughout the policy. And then also, when we come to just get to the point, number two, in this policy suspension from school, we just added a paragraph, which is our current practices, that suspensions will be used to minimum degree necessary to promote improved student behavior and maximize student attendance. And again, that is under suspensions. And we will go to the next policy. The rest was just formatting and pronouns. 5300.5, discipline of students with disabilities. Again, we just are doing pronouns and formatting changes in this policy. When we look at 5300.6, student searches and interrogations, it's same formatting changes. And when we look at 5300.65, visitors to schools, this is another policy that we've made quite a few changes to. There are no revisions. 5300.7, public conduct on school property. Some minor changes when you look at the first sentence of the first paragraph. This addition is committed to providing, and we, a welcoming, engaging, respectful, orderly environment. We add "safe" to that. And we also, under prohibited conduct, under number one, it says intentionally injure any person or threaten to do so, and we add "or endanger the safety of themselves or others."
Thank you very much. You did a great job.
That is a synopsis. If any member of the public, Ms. Brogan, has a comment, we'll ask them to raise their hand. Is that okay?
Yeah.
And while we're waiting to see if anybody raises their hand, if anybody who is viewing wants to see these policies in detail, they are on the website, and there'll be, you know, another chance for comments at our February meeting before adoption. And so at this point, Ms. Brogan, I do not see any public comments. So if you wanted to take a motion to conclude the public hearing and return to the regularly scheduled meeting, we could do so.
Okay, can I have a motion to conclude the public hearing and return to the regularly scheduled meeting? Ingrid, Anthony, all in favor? Okay, moving right along to the policy 1900, can I have a motion to waive the first read? Ingrid, Janice? All in favor?
And I think, before we vote, I think Ms. Wright was just going to give us a quick
Oh, I'm sorry.
Quick update. Hi, so policy 1900, which is family and parent engagement. This policy looks familiar. We just edited it and adopted it in November with some changes. Upon further review of the policy committee, we decided to add some additional language to the section, Coordination of Parental Involvement Strategies. We added wording to further clarify the strategies that the district will employ to coordinate parent involvement. And we also added some language to the annual methods that we'll be using to review such policy each year. So this information is all on the website, and the additions on there. And that's the first read. The other policies are on for second read and adoption. And since the last meeting, we have not had any comments or anything with regard to those policies. So we're prepared to adopt them also tonight. But this one's just for a first read.
Thank you, Ingrid. Could I, all in favor? James, take a motion to adopt?
First, we'll do a motion to waive the second reading.
Okay, so can I have a motion to waive the second reading? Janice, Ingrid, all in favor? Okay, and can I have a motion now to adopt all of the policies, one through 10? Janice, Tara, all in favor? Okay, and Mr. Stuccio, financial reports and recommendations. I know that they're all attached.
They're all attached for your review. It's the warrants for December and the budget status reports, treasuries report, and trial balance for the month of November.
Okay, and any facilities update?
I'm pleased to inform the board that we began work at the Westside Cafeteria to provide the ventilation system. So over the December break, we were able to do some needed asbestos abatement and also begin some of the structural work. We're currently waiting for equipment to arrive, and we hope to have this project complete and the ventilation system up and running, which will be heat and air conditioning in the Westside Cafeteria by March of this year. Again, that is all dependent, though, on equipment arrival for that. Also, we began right before, actually during December break, the replacement of James Amen Field. And I'm very pleased to report, I got some pictures today. The new carpet is down, the seaming, the putting in the logo. I expect that this project will be completed sometime next week or the week after. So a three- or four-week timeline to replace the field is really unbelievable. And, and by doing it in the winter, at the recommendation of our architect, I think that we we were able to obtain a competitive price and able to get the project done right away and avoid any kind of delays or issues with our spring, fall seasons that are coming up. and avoid any kind of delays or issues with our spring, fall seasons that are coming up or anything that's going on in the summer. So we're pleased that we're moving forward. Also, finally, we're continuing to work on the bomb plants. Plans and specs have gone up to the Education Department for Goose Hill, for the renovations at Goose Hill. And we're almost ready to send bomb phase two at the high school, which is the new science addition, the steam wing. And the fitness center, that plant, those plans and specs up to state ed, that should be going up shortly. And again, the plan is hopefully, once that building firm is approved, to break ground sometime late spring, summer on the new addition, and also work to complete the steam wing this upcoming summer. So a lot of exciting things going on.
Yeah, and with regards to the locker rooms at the junior senior high school, they're completely finished now?
The locker rooms are complete. All the punchless items have been attended to. It is an absolutely beautiful space and very excited to have been able to complete that. And it's in use. So not in use how, you know, it's intended at this point. At least the restroom facilities and such are in use.
Janice, I mean, James, can you send us up-to-date pictures on the locker room?
Absolutely, absolutely. And what we can do is we can ask our project manager actually to do, I'll see if he can do a video tour for us.
That would be great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, so if there's nothing else, can I have a motion? Oh, Ingrid, sorry.
Sorry, I think you cut out for a second. I thought you asked for a motion. Sorry, Amy.
Oh, I was, nobody has any other questions or comments? Okay, so can I have a motion to adjourn? Ingrid, Tara, all in favor? So I, good night, everybody, and I hope you have a good evening. And if I don't see you, have a good, long weekend.